Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for January 2nd, 2024. First off, thank you all for being present while we settled something for the meeting ahead of time. So, just put us behind a few minutes. But, we are going to ask our good friend Hank Rosso, Fire, the Watertown Fire Department Chaplain, and a good friend of ours to lead us into the new year the way that it should do, should be done with prayer and petition. So, please rise.
Thank you, Your Honor. For God in heaven, we thank you for this time together this evening. We thank you for good gifts that you give, wisdom and understanding, and love for each other and for this community. And God, we thank you for this new year. And we understand, as life is, that it comes with challenges, but also it comes with opportunities to show kindness and compassion to those in need and consider each other as more important than ourselves. And God, as we gather together, we thank you for so much. We take many things in Watertown for granted. Our city streets are safe, the healthcare systems we have, and it's just a great, great place to live. And God, as we gather together, we ask for your continued hand of protection on those in our law enforcement and Fire Department, paramedics, and EMTs, all of those that watch over us. We thank you for all these things. For Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Tupper.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Holene.
Here.
Durand.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with one change. We are going to remove item 9A, the approval of the bid award at the airport. That item will be struck. It is, we are going to send it to the Airport Board at their upcoming meeting this Monday. So with that change, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy and seconded by Councilman Bueller, was that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. With that, we are on to item 11A, an application for a transfer of a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from Heilmann's Roadside Gas LLC to Heilmann's Roadside Gas LLC doing business as Heilmann's Roadside Gas LLC at a different location of Crans and DeVille OL, a government lot 1, 5 through 116-52A. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please do a better job of explaining that than I just did.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So the two items, A and B, are kind of combined, so I'll kind of explain what's happening. So the first one is going to be a transfer of the license. They are going to be operating basically two licenses for the video lottery. So with that, there had to be an address change because only 10 machines per address. So that's why the first one is a transfer, just to get the address right. And the second one you're reviewing is they did transfer of ownership to that second location within the same building. So if there's any questions, everything's been noticed, all fees have been paid. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, take council action. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on this, Council? Councilman Danforth?
That requirement for 10 machines, is that city ordinance or is that state law?
I believe that's state law.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further conversation, Council? With that, the motion is to approve the transfer. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper.
Aye.
Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Holene.
Aye.
Durand.
Abstain.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries. We're on to item B, an application for a transfer of a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from Rock McGillivray, McGillivray?
McGillivray.
McGillivray, thank you, to Heilmann's Roadside Gas LLC. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please take it away.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So yeah, like I was explaining, this would be the second location within that same building, so this is an actual transfer of ownership. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, take council action. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the transfer. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper.
Aye.
Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Yes, aye.
Holene.
Aye.
Durand.
Abstain.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. We're on to item C, a second reading of an ordinance 23-26, amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown, South Dakota, for lots 2 through 5, Mansell, second addition from its current designation of R1, single-family residential district to PUD planned unit development. Our Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Heath Fawn, I will tell us more.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading and public hearing of this rezone application. We've talked at length about this application at both Planning Commission meetings and then at the first reading of the City Council, at our last City Council meeting. This is to rezone R1 zoned property to planned unit development, a PUD. With the PUD rezone, it requires a PUD plan. That plan is two parts. It's got a written narrative to it that describes the land use and functions within the PUD, and then also the plans themselves, the physical plans of what the layout of the land will look like with the improvements as being proposed. This is a unique rezone. Any PUD is a unique rezone because the applicant is then held to the terms of the PUD plan, both the written narrative and the planned view drawings, as far as the building locations and things of that nature. They all have to be followed through according to the plan. If you recall from the first reading, there was discussion on the drainage components that city staff had caught after it had been processed through the Planning Commission, and the location of the detention pond was of concern. And we've since gotten a revised plan sheet from the applicant on what, on addressing those concerns, and I'll share that with you here briefly if I could, Mayor. So this page is the original plan of the PUD, and this detention pond on the easterly side of their developments was the one that was in question and of concern because it, we questioned the ability to retain the hydraulic connectivity from the wetland to the lake because there's a culvert that runs underneath the roadway and goes through this channel in this location where this detention pond was going to be installed. So the revised plan shows that that channel is preserved, and the detention ponds are relocated to the southerly end of the property. So in cursory review, this addresses staff's concern. We would dig into the technical details, make sure that the capacities of these ponds and all that are adequate and appropriate as required by our subsequent review processes before any building permits are issued. But I just wanted to address that with the Council, that that staff concern has been addressed, and from there, we will stand by for any questions that the Council or Republic might have.
Thank you very much. I will open up a public hearing. I want to remind everyone in the audience, I see a lot of familiar faces, a few new faces, that we had an extremely lengthy hearing upon this at our last council meeting. It is not my intention to stop any further public hearing or any testimony or anything like that, but with that said, we have gone over these issues quite a few times. So if it is an issue that you know that we've gone through, and this is for Council as well, if it's an issue that you know we've gone over, unless something has changed, you can just say, has something changed, or is this still the way that it has been a couple weeks ago? With that said, I do still want to invite anyone who wants to talk upon this issue to do so. Please don't ever feel like your voice is stifled in front of the City Council. With that, I would like to ask for proponent's testimony and then opponent testimony. I don't want it to just be a free-for-all, so any proponent testimony.
Eric Scott with Campsco and Crestone Companies as a developer of the property. Aaron Hanson and I, Aaron lives on South Lake Drive here, acquired this property about a year and a half ago to develop it. There is a large demand from people living adjacent and across the street for a contractor shop, storage, sportsman's condos as we're calling them, type of a product on the lake, near the lake, near their homes where they can get their toys and have a place to park cars, things like that. South Lake Drive is very narrow, very short driveways there. So that's where this all started. Ultimately, we tried to do CL, so we knew we were going to build one shop where we knew, or one building where we knew we had five sold. Ultimately, the consensus amongst this body, some different folks on it, was that they wanted more information, so we came back with the PUD and a more fully developed plan here. So that's what we present to you now. This is what we are confident that the marketplace wants, that some folks in the area want, obviously some do not. And, you know, we felt like it was built consistent with guidance and what the Lake Kimpeska Master Plan called out for additional housing, additional access to the lake, and those sportsman's condos. So that's what we came up with. We do, you know, obviously there's a lot of feedback here, a lot of input, and if we do fail tonight, we'll try to take another stab at this, come back with something that the community and this body can live with, but, you know, I think that's it. Does anybody have any technical questions for myself?
We will be holding off until a public hearing is done for Council to ask questions to anybody who testifies, but I also want to make it clear that it is improper for anybody who testifies pro or against to solicit answers directly from the Council. Questions can come to me. I hope that everyone saw at the previous hearings on this that I wrote down every question and I made sure everyone was asked and answered, and we will follow through with that same procedure tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Is there any further proponent testimony?
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Hanson, 1082 South Lake Drive, partnered with Eric Scott in Campsco to develop the property. We do want to do this in as responsible a manner as possible while also understanding that it has to be feasible at the same time. So the only question I would just ask the Council to ask themselves if, if they can't reach a consensus tonight, then to potentially consider a work session, so that way we could all be on the same page and have some cohesiveness and get some good direction going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further proponents? Any further proponents? Any opponents? And again, the procedure, just identify who you are and if you represent someone other than yourself.
Craig Swarthout, 1010 South Lake Drive, which is just east of us. I have just one item that I'd like you to consider, and I'm...
Yeah, is that microphone on?
Thank you. Sorry, I'll start again. Craig Swarthout, 1010 South Lake Drive. I got a copy of the ordinance and read it to 21.38, and I just have one question for the Council to consider, and that is, the last phrase of this, the last line of the first paragraph talks about "such use is planned so as to assure that they will not materially alter the existing character of the neighborhood." In my opinion, the character of the neighborhood is not at all close to the character of the plan that's being put forth, and since there isn't very much objective detail in here to try and understand what material is, that is going to be left up to you as the Council to decide what's material and what isn't material. In my opinion, it's a material change. If you look up and down South Lake Drive, there isn't anything like this, and it's not just this neighborhood, but the entire South Lake Drive has nothing like this for a neighborhood. So it's not just a change in this neighborhood, but it's really a change for what is on the entire South Lake Drive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Swarthout. Any further opponents?
My name is John Kessler, and I live at 938 South Lake Drive. I lived several years at 1030 South Lake Drive, which is adjacent to this project. I'll keep my comments short because respect what the mayor said, but I'll repeat, a lot of this stuff has been addressed. But my biggest concern, with exception to the runoff, which has been changed, is the congestion of the area. When I lived there, it's, in the summer, is always the busiest time of the year, and people come out to visit, people on the lake, and it is so tight down there that people are parking off to the sides of the road, which I understand that is something that isn't necessarily legal, but is probably not something that we want to be enforcing. But that being said, I still travel that road quite often in the summer, and there are many times where I will drive down the middle of the road because the, all the vehicles that are parked around there and the short distance between the houses and the road, it is just a hazardous stretch of property there, and this is just going to add to that And like I said, I'll just keep my comments short, I'll just do a summary of what I was going to say, and it's simply, it's a high-density project on this stretch of road that is probably, probably second only to across from the country club as far as being a hazard. And it will adversely change the character of the neighborhood, and it's just simply not the proper or best use of this land. It's been compared to the storage units that have been built to the west, and I think it's been called the Munger property. I think that's probably comparing apples to oranges, simply because that property was built on farmland, which is relatively much higher, and it is hundreds of yards away from the lake, and it's just not even compared to what we're dealing with here, is the close proximity to the road and the adjoining R1 properties. So I just, I always respectfully request that you'd follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and deny this request. Thank you for your...
Mr. Kessler, before you go, I want to make one thing clear to everyone. Just because I've asked you to be unique, don't feel like your testimony has to be cut short. If you have something you want to say, by all means say it, even if you've said it before. I want to be respectful of everyone who has a concern. I think you've been very respectful of the Council when you've testified before, and I hope that you've seen that the Council has listened to every question and asked and answered them. That's what I, I want everyone to know that that is the process that we follow up here, whether or not the vote goes a certain way. So don't feel like you have to be stifled.
No, and I appreciate that. As I said, it's just, when we look at, does it check all the boxes? It may, but if it's just a matter of checking boxes, then we'd be just asking the city staff to approve and we move on. That's why we're here, is to look at it from a higher view and decide whether this is a proper use of this land, and in my opinion, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further opponents?
I'm Nancy Beasley, and I've been here before to testify. I believe the residents in this area have showed up for several meetings now. I think you've heard their voice. There's been a lot of people that are against this. The Planning Commission last year thought it was going to be six units, six or seven units that were going to be brought to the City Council. I came to those meetings. Kimpesco said they were going to be transparent about it, and now we get a PUD with 40 units. We didn't like six or seven. Storage buildings, garages, sportsman's condos, we thought that was a poor use of the land. Now we find out it's going to be 40 units in our residential neighborhood. I live there, part-time, but I do live there. I don't want it to change. I've been there for 20 years. I think most of the residents in that area feel like it should just stay in R1. Maybe it never should have been brought into the city. Water over the dam, we can't do anything about that. I see too much congestion out there with that many units and people coming in and out, the safety of crossing that road. I just feel like it should stay in R1. Also, when they talk about using that island as part of their acreage to get to that five acres to be able to build that much density on, I think that's really stretching the boundaries of that PUD. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further opponents? Any further opponents?
I live on the farm east of the property on the side hill. The zoning board voted against us. Now, I don't know how many letters that's been handed in opposing this. I noticed last time we had the zoning board, that the mayor holed up a lot of them. So, that's about all I can say. We just don't want them down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. And I do want to acknowledge, as I did at the last council meeting, I held up a stack of letters that were signed in opposition to this. That Mr. Berg, I think largely, I don't want to say solely collected, but from different people. So, any further opponents?
John Strandell, 1017 South Lake Drive. Owned that property for approximately 20 years now and plan on living there the rest of my days. Grew up in Watertown, appreciated the lake for all these years. That is a busy road, and there are cars parked out on the street nearly every day. As I pull out of my driveway, I can see them down along that area of the property near the Sandy Shore Park. I know that you guys have been addressed, or at least the environmental issues have been addressed on this, the receiving pond and the culvert, which I've, understand that the city is going to be required to install after the fact, or at least somehow or other, get that squeezed in there during this process. At one time or another, I did hear that, you know, they brought up the island being part of the five acres, which is a pretty, 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 like I say, a stretch, like was addressed. Someone, somebody wrong the way said that there was potential plan of putting up another house out on that island, which would, I'm not sure how that'd fit into this PUD. Is that, is that something that has been addressed and, you know, something to think about? I, I'd just like to conclude by letting you know that I don't believe this is a good idea, and Toby's slough is going to be affected by it quite severely. There has been, and some talk about some of the wildlife already being reduced, fewer geese, geese and wild, wild waterfall fall. You know, I, I don't know how many studies have been done to actually approve that, but that, pardon me?
I think it was just someone online. If you are online, please make sure you're on mute.
I, anyway, it, to the, anyway, if, if that, that's another consideration that this is going to change the, the, the environmental process of the slough, wildlife process. So, thank you for listening to me.
Sorry for being interrupted there. I don't know who is online. Is someone online who would like to testify?
Dropped off?
Dropped off? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for that. Any further opponents? Any further opponents?
I live at 1062 South Lake Drive. We've always, we've always talked about the buildings and all that. What about that part on the west, on the east side of that channel? It doesn't seem like there's a lot of discussion on that. We've got, what it shows and what it says, pretty much it's proposed or other. We've got an apartment building there. We've got, they're going to put up, or this is what's on this, this, what I got here. They're going to put a pier there for, and, and that's the old, that slough there gets, gets, you get a lot of water in there when we, when we have water. Right now, it's dry. Going to do a kayak launch. I mean, this is what I have on mine that I ended up getting before this, when we had that meeting over here, Mr., over across the old Berg place. We have public parking. We have, well, a little bit of everything there. A boardwalk that's going to go up to the, to the island. We've got all this, this bike trail. I understand the city's going to pay for it, or the state. It's still going to be tax dollars that are going to be put to work on private land. That should be taken into consideration. There's, nothing, everything seems to change all the time with this project, and it's, it's got, it has a lot of us concerned. So, if we could address some of that and see where we're at with it, you know, that would really help, but it's, it's a mystery right now to me. We've been, and then if we're talking the five or the eight, is, is the five acres, does that stop at the, kind of at the channel there on the, on the west side? Or where does that five acres end up at? That they're always talking about. You got the buildings and all, we talked, talked that part to death. But where's the, where's the five acres? You bring in the, the island and you, and it was talked about, it was, it's eight acres with the island. Is that other part where that dry slough is there? And where that apartment's going to be, where this public parking is going to be? Is, where's that at? I mean, once you, once this, this, this is in a plan that I got from when I was over at Mansell's place, it, I don't know if it's on this new one or not.
And I'm going to pause for a moment. I want clarification. What plan are you looking at? Because as far as like a kayak launch?
Well, that's what they, what they gave us when, on, on September the 19th, when we went over to the meeting.
Director Von I, could you clarify this?
And I don't know what's on this one anymore. I, I, I don't have a, kind of an updated one.
Our community development manager, Hanton, if you want to chime in, you can as well. But Director Von I?
Yes, absolutely. To Mr. DeVille's points, what the applicant has shown us some conceptual ideas that include realigning the city's bike path to kind of meander out through their site. And then as you work easterly in, through their property, there's a proposed or a tentative conceptual parking lot area, a fishing pier and a kayak launch. But I would just stress that these are conceptual, just as noted on the plan sheet, meaning that the applicant was just doing, going over and above to show what could happen in this area. These items, with exception to the pathway, are not budgeted by the city. The pathway itself has an application into the state right now, which is a route that would run adjacent to the roadway. If this PUD is approved, we would then approach the state to look at realigning the pathway to meander through this site as being proposed. Staff doesn't see that to be a big issue. There might be a little bit of a cost variation there that we would have to work through and figure out with the state. But generally speaking, these conceptual items are just that. They're concepts that we may or may not pursue in the future, and that's something that the developer just simply showed that could be done to help make this all the more usable to the public.
Thank you. Continue, Mr. DeVille.
But it's other and proposed, that's what gets me. They can do about, you know, they do this afterwards. Another thing I saw one day is I saw a game fishing parks guy over there with one of the fellas and looking over some of this. Are they going to get involved in this down the road? Is there any of that, that going to happen? You know, the problem is I don't like things hanging in the air, and we've got a lot of things that change hang in the air. And let's find out what they're really going to do, because it's, 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 it's a mystery to me. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. DeVille. Any further opponents? Any further opponents? Last call. Okay, I will close the public hearing. And I, before I go to ask some questions that I know were presented to us from the opponent testimony, chair will first entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the zoning map. Just keep in mind, everyone out there, just to make the motion or to second it does not mean that you are in favor of it. It just means that you are making the motion so that we can debate it. Councilman Tupper and then Councilman Shuddy. Okay. Unless council disagrees, I'm going to present some of the questions that I know were presented by opponent testimony. The one that came up multiple times was congestion in the area, largely South Lake Drive, the width, the parking, the added density that would come up. Director Von I, would you like to tackle this one or pass it off to community development manager, Hanton?
I can address that. Mayor, from, just from a traffic management, transportation engineering standpoint, I guess what I could say to that concern is, in relation to the application, the applicant has indicated access into their site and driveway and parking space adequate to support the users of their site. It's not to say that if allowed on the road, I don't even know without going out there and looking what's allowed for on-street parking, if there's room for any or not, but I can tell you that the developer has designed this so that everything is sustained on their site.
So, the, the concern of added congestion, the added cars would be taken care of by moving onto that site theoretically? I mean, according to that proposal and your understanding of it?
Correct. The congestion of the volume of cars being present at any one time would be taken care of on their property. The congestion of traffic coming and going wouldn't be of concern just based on it being an adequate two-lane roadway that can handle a pretty large amount of traffic volume.
Question for you. Do, the cars being parked on the street now, is that legal or illegal?
I, again, I would have to go out and look. I don't know as though it is legal along there, and maybe it's just allowed in certain...
Captain Bochamp, I see you in the back. Is parking on that street legal, illegal?
I would have to, well, they're in, I'm off my head, I can't...
And this is one of those gray areas. I'm going to just encourage council to vote your conscience on that one because there are other areas in Watertown where something might not be expressly legal, but people still do it, and that's the way that it has been done.
Can I just ask a question on that? Maybe for Captain Bochamp. Is it legal to park in the right-of-way? Legal, is it legal to park in the right-of-way? City right-of-way?
Just take the microphone, Captain.
This might clarify that question. Is it legal to park on a city right-of-way?
As far as, if it's signed or if it's not signed? If it's not signed, no parking, then we will not ticket it.
So, I can park on my front boulevard at any time?
Oh, in front of your house?
Yeah.
Yes.
On my boulevard.
Well, not on the boulevard, but...
It's the same thing.
Okay.
It's a, it's a right-of-way. So, right-of-way along the street around the lake is the same thing as the boulevard.
I know there's areas around the lake where the bike path is, but without actually going out there and looking at that specific spot, I would not be able to answer your question.
I know a long time ago, we passed an ordinance, or maybe not an ordinance, but it was a problem along, especially around the Fourth of July, and I remember it being brought up that we were going to be very lenient along the Fourth of July because everybody has relatives or friends or whatever out to the lake, and we weren't going to enforce it at that time. But I know you can't legally park in a right-of-way in which that would be a right-of-way.
Thank you. I just, I, I, that was just a question. We can go back to it if we want to. Director Von I, did you wish to add anything on the congestion?
No, sir, I think that addresses it.
Okay. There was another question, not necessarily a question, but a point that was made that originally in this iteration, when it was brought forward as a zoning request change, which this is as well, but this was for the CL. It was six to seven units, now it's 40 units. Is that a correct formation?
Yeah, so that point, you know, we talked about it the first reading as well, where the first application was for a rezone to CL, the Commercial Lake District. And in that rezone, the applicant stated some of their intentions, initially being a five-unit structure, five or six unit, whatever it was. As I explained in the first reading, when, when we zone things, R1, 2, 3, CL, C1, C2, C3, that's giving a blanket approval for that land according to our zoning ordinance to use all the, to all the uses as outlined in the ordinance. So, you have permitted uses and conditional uses, and they build according to the zoning ordinance and our building codes. The thing that's particular about a PUD, though, is it's honed in in greater detail. You know exactly over the whole landmass what it is they're doing. My point being, the CL information was really, the adjective's escaping me right now. It was conceptual information to share on what they anticipated to do, but only the first phase of what they anticipated to do under a CL zoning. They wouldn't have stopped there because it wouldn't have made sense to stop there. They had a lot more land to develop after those first five or six units went in. They would have kept adding more later on. The PUD allows us to see exactly what they're going to put in and to what extent. The CL would not have shown that, and I think is in part why it got denied, because of all the unknown that came with the CL. Did that help answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Director. Another question that was brought up, I know that we dealt with it at the previous meeting, but the use of the island and the, and/or the peninsula, however you want to look at it, is being used as part of the land to fit the PUD land size requirement? And I know that we have talked about it before at the previous meeting and, but I want you to address that in summarizing.
Absolutely, Mayor. So, this PUD area, this land area that's outlined in red, let's see if I had a map with the whole outline. Or here, it's outlined in turquoise color. That makes up 7.92 acres, so just, just shy of eight acres. So, if you cut off a line here somewhere around in here and you took out this peninsula acres, this landmass would still meet the five-acre PUD minimum requirement. So, while the peninsula's being used, it's not necessary to be used to meet the five-acre minimum, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you. There were concerns raised by Mr. Strandell regarding Toby's slough being affected environmentally. And I know that the concerns of the runoff and a lot of other things have been brought forward. I guess I'm going to bring that up. I'm going to allow council to address that as they, as they want, as they wish, because we have gone through the flooding component, the fill component, the, a little bit of the channel, but this was, the comment was a lot about the wildlife, and I'm going to allow council to address that as their concerns are met, because seriously, some people don't care about Canadian geese and some people do, just as a matter of course, as I, as I've seen it. There was a question raised by Mr. DeVille. Will the game fishing parks be involved? Can we even know that? Have they been involved previously?
To my knowledge, they have not, but the game fishing parks does often coordinate with developers and/or other public agencies to install things like fishing piers, kayak launches, things of that nature.
Okay. And the bike trail came up again tonight. Quick understanding, the bike trail is going to be going through that stretch with or without this PUD, correct?
Correct. As, as it is pending grant funding right now at the state level. That grant funding has not been secured, but yes, that is the plan to...
So, state and city funding will be used to build a bike trail there regardless of... So, state and city funding will be used to build a bike trail there regardless of the bike, of this PUD?
Correct.
Will this PUD potentially add to the cost of that bike trail?
If the city approves this and the state subsequently approves this realignment in our current application, there could be higher costs because of the, the fill associated with, you know, being adjacent to and crossing over certain parts of a wetland. I, it'd only be speculation on to what extent that would be a higher cost, but that'd be something that the state would have to be willing to sign off on as well.
And Director Von I, I guess one of my questions as well is because originally, the bike trail was planned to go along, right, right along South Lake Drive.
Correct.
This takes it away from South Lake Drive, so it adds a little bit of distance, but you could, I mean, depending upon how you look at it, whether or not you like the bike trail right along the South Lake Drive, or you like it closer to the nature, it could add cost but make it safer. It could add cost but destroy nature. It could make it safer from, say, South Lake Drive. I'm just saying, there, the bike trail is not just a cut and dried issue on this one, but I do think that it would probably raise the cost at least a little bit. But that's just my estimation. Director?
Yeah, one last point I'll make on the bike, bike path, Mayor, is even if this PUD is approved, the city is not locked in or committed to realign the bike path as shown here. We can still construct it along the roadway if we desire to do that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Jerrance, I'll go to you in just a moment. Before I open it up for council questions and comments, I want to thank you. I hope that everyone in the audience knows that the questions that have been asked tonight, I have answered or at least brought forward. And I know that there will be more from the council. I want to make one thing clear, the P, the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission did vote against this, so to overturn their decision, it would take a super majority of five affirmative votes to overturn this and approve the PUD. And I'll just leave it at that. So it will take a super majority of votes from the council in the affirmative to overrule the Plan Commission and approve this PUD. Councilman Jerrance, please begin us, or please begin the questions.
I'd like to start with a bike path.
Is your microphone?
My mic's on now. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Holin. I'd like to start with a bike path. First of all, I am not an expert on road construction. I'm not an expert on bike path construction, but it does look like by the, the map that the path will be longer. I don't think we need to be an engineer to figure that out. And it's also been in my experience of watching city council meetings over the last year or two, that we have had to allocate additional money to fix part of our bike trail already that's next to wetlands. And in the beginning, I was like, yeah, the wet, the, the bike path, gonna be nice, gonna curve through there, gonna be next to the cattails. That all sounded good to me until I started thinking about the cost, not only up front, just laying the base in for, next to cattails and next to wetlands, I mean, only logic tells me that's gonna go up. It's already gonna be longer, that's gonna go up. Has this all been thought of in our grant that we applied for with the state? And will this add extra cost when, when we, when we approve the bike path?
Councilman, I just want to make sure, do you want answers to those questions? I think the, I think it would be safe to assume that simply because this has not been approved, that the extra cost of filling in closer to a wetland has not been counted. Would that be Director, Director Von I? But Councilman, if you would like a answer to your question on the cost of the fill and what was the second question?
No, it wasn't anything to do with the cost of the fill, the cost of construction.
Cost of construction.
Due to the added length of the bike path and the proximity to the wetland and the cattails.
Director Von I?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. So the cost, yes, again, I think it would be higher. To what degree though, I'm not certain, you know, because there was a certain amount of fill needed even to build it along the roadway. The length is longer, so there you would have increased costs. As well, as far as whether it was part of the application to the state, no, it hasn't, it was not. And we would have to amend that application to see if the state would consider this alignment. So that would be a question mark and we would have to wait approval from them before we would even consider it further. And again, if, if we didn't, if the numbers didn't pan out, we didn't want to build it in this manner, we're not obligated to, we can still put it along the roadway if we want to, in the long run, when we get all the information from the state.
Councilman Jerrance, the floor is still yours.
I'll put the chips down on the table right now and say that the cost will be higher and substantially higher, higher versus lower. I'm gonna just go into just one or two points here and let Aaron and Eric know that doing things for the city, I appreciate that. I understand the risk of developing, rolling the dice, making things work out. It's not an easy game. But I also am understanding that a lot of the phone calls that I've received and emails are about the density, which was brought up. So I'm not gonna go down that, but density in a wetland area really, really makes and breaks this deal for me tonight. The fragile land, the wildlife, the ducks are going off and the crowd. Thirty-five foot, 30 to 35-foot buildings, next to South Lake Drive, steel buildings. I, I really just feel that there are many, many locations other than this area would be much more suited than in this R1 area. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just a reminder, please turn your phones off. We will not accept that duck call as opponent testimony. Any further comments and questions? Councilman Tupper?
I have a number of them and, and could I ask Community Development Manager, Hanton, to step up in, in some of these maybe for Public Works Director Von I?
Come forward.
Brandy was maybe pausing, I apologize, but she was maybe speculating. I would be able to field them for you, Councilman, if you'd like.
Well, and I don't know who, that's why I just asked her to step up instead of...
No, that's perfectly fine.
Looking at this project, I do have some questions. And a lot of the questions been brought up, and matter of fact, first I'm gonna start out with thank you for everybody's input, whether it's opponents or proponents, it's been a long drug-out thing. But thank you for your short period of time tonight because we've covered a lot of that stuff, so whichever one of you guys want to answer these few questions I have. So if this were to not pass, you were to stay in R1, they could build houses on it,
That's correct.
And if they were to build houses on it, would they have to come back to this Plan Commission or the Board of Adjustments or us?
No, so if it remained the R1 single-family residential district and they wanted to put single-family homes on the six lots that were platted, it would not have to come back.
So density on the six plots, or six lots, let's say there was max density with building houses compared to this, would that be similar?
So the max density that they would have, depending on a, or based on a 9,000 square foot lot size, they could put 17 single-family lots on this amount of property. However, then there would most likely need to be private drives and a replat done, so then that would have to come back to council.
Okay, so then you would have private drives coming off of, or going on to South Lake Drive from each one of these properties? Possibly.
And most likely not all 17 lots would be able to front South Lake Drive. They would most likely have a private drive or a public right-of-way that would allow these lots to be divided in half almost, so you'd have some to the north, some to the south.
Okay, one of my biggest questions is gonna be, and I think this has been confusing with a lot of people, because I know some of the emails and calls I've had cover this, and I'll just say it the simple way, is Toby Slough getting filled in? Is any dirt going back into Toby Slough?
No, that, and that would have to be delineated by the Army Corps prior to any grading permit or development where it would be impacting any of that, any of that sensitive wetland area.
Okay, one other question I have, and, and that's a lot of the questions that have came up with, with the people is, you know, they're gonna raise all this in drainage. But over the last probably 10 years or even maybe a little bit more than that, every new house I've seen going along on the lakeside or remodel on the lakeside where I've seen people raise their houses, and this is on the lakeside, which is, you know, it's right along the body of water, where we got a lot of drainage issues, have a lot of them been required to raise their property.
Absolutely. If they're doing a substantial improvement or a new construction, they do have to elevate to the elevation of 1725.8.
Which would be the same as this, correct?
Yes, this would have the same requirement as any house that is on the lake.
So, you know, when we're talking about elevations, it doesn't make any difference which side of the street we're on. It's the same thing.
Right. Yep, that's a FEMA requirement.
Because both sides of the street are in the same floodplain and being built and filled to the same base flood elevation requirements per our city ordinances.
One more question and then I'll be done. So if they were to leave this R1 and build those houses, and maybe you can't answer this question, that's fine, would there be more fill required to bring that up to, or put it this way, would there be more, what do you call it, pervious coverage or...
Impervious.
Impervious, there you go. To, to leave it at an R1 and build homes in it than there is with this project?
That, that's hard to say.
Okay, and I didn't know if you could answer that one or not, so, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question before I go to Councilman Danforth. Mr. Scott, there was a question about the game fishing parks being involved and I wanted to, Director Von I wasn't able to answer that. I wanted to know if you had input on that, that would help the council.
Sure. Eric Scott with CAMSCO. So we did meet with GFNP out there, we just wanted to get this, some of their input on what some of the public or GFNP initiatives were, especially in regards to the Fish Highway and what they would like to see there, so. And while I have the mic, I can answer a question about the bike trail if...
I'll allow it.
Thank you. So, again, we, we tried to put this together as something that the public would want and get GFNP's input, some other input. And at one time, Jared had said that the city actually reached out to him and requested an easement across his property to run the bike trail on Toby Slough rather than South Lake Drive. So this is a version, a vision of what it could be and that we would be willing to grant that easement if the city or state so chose to realign that bike trail. We're not necessarily requesting it or requiring it with the PUD.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. Some of it relates to tonight, some of it relates to previous meetings that we had, but, you know, it, the comment in one of the last meetings was that the PUD checks, you know, they check all the boxes. And that really only pertains to eligibility. It doesn't pertain to the determination of whether it's a proper or effective or acceptable development. It just means, do they check the boxes to become a, a PUD? And that's really what, where we're at, is, is this a, an acceptable use for this land? In regards, I've heard that, that the phrase tonight several times about density. Now, there's two types of density. One is construction density, use of the land, and the other is the population density that goes along with this. I believe it was said there could be somewhere as close to 17 single-family homes there. Well, all right, that's, I don't know what that actually is in regards to ground coverage and all the, the hard surfaces and such and roads or whatever that would take. But certainly 17 single-family homes doesn't correlate density-wise to the 45 units being proposed here. The 45 times X number of people, that I don't know what that is. So population-wise, and I think that's been one of the concerns with this area, when we talk about density, not just the land density use, but also the, the population which correlates directly to the traffic that's on, on South Lake Drive. And that's important because it isn't just about how much land are you covering versus how much aren't you covering? And I know people get sick and tired of this, of hearing this at times, but I spent years on the Plan Commission and for years, the people in engineering preached and preached and taught and taught us about what good development was and how good development standards and, and what we did, how that needed to be our roadmap of how we developed with, with some exception there. And to me, to be honest with you, this, this development, the PUD, doesn't follow what I was taught. It doesn't transition well from, from the lake outward. I've heard it said tonight, contractor shops. Contractor shops don't need to be across from our lake in regards to single-family housing. They can be somewhere else. They don't need to be there. Sportsman's shops or condos, yeah, maybe, they kind of go along with that. The, the density of this, and when I'm talking density, I'm talking both. I'm talking both the physical density and the people density of this thing. We aren't doing any transitioning there without question, and I've heard it on this council and I've heard it from individuals expressing concerns. I travel that road a lot and especially in the spring, summer, early fall months. And that road is, it gets so pinched down into that area. I mean, there's a general, there's one I see that, I've seen him out washing his vehicle and the back end of his vehicle is almost in the road. I mean, that's how tight it is down there. Not a lot of room in many places to park off the side of the road because the water and ditch comes right up to it. Councilman Tupper, I, I recall, I was on, either on the council or on the Plan Commission when there was a significant amount of discussion about parking in the right-of-way. And at the same time, we talked about, look, we, we don't have parking spots around that lake. That road is, it's narrow, it's windy. We don't have any parking lots around there for people to park in, somebody to go and use in the facility. The, on one hand, the Lake Compeska Master Plan talks about more ability to use the lake. Well, if we take, if we enforce the non-right-of-way parking, we're gonna take that, that use away from a lot of people around like, there's just no place to go. At that point, it really was, like you said, Mr. Tupper, you said, we just kind of decided to ignore it because we really thought it, ultimately, it was safer to have vehicles in the right-of-way and off and away from the road than it was to not. So I'm, my position on this is, is that it's not good development. It is a nice development opportunity somewhere else, just the wrong spot in my, in my opinion.
Any further questions, comments? Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to kind of voice my position here and some of my concerns, you know, and again, I know you hear from Mike and I, we're old grandfathers of planning, you know, we've been involved with it for a long time. From the get-go, this did not look to me like it was a, a good transition in planning to go from R1 across that road. I have a lot of the same concerns about this as some of my, my fellow council people. I know that, you know, there is a potential for 17 lots and I would, I can't imagine 17 families deciding to build a house in that spot. I just can't imagine that would happen to begin with. My concerns are, obviously, there is some density issues, there's some safety concerns and I agree with some of the things Mike said too, or Councilman Danforth, in regards to that, that road. I mean, that road is, it's narrow, you gotta be really on your game going through that. You know, you got somebody on the cell phone and that could be trouble. So, you know, and I normally don't see traffic as an issue, but here I really, I really do. And, and I don't, I don't think this is a good spot for that much impervious surface. And I don't, I don't think this is a good spot for that much impervious surface. And, and this is last but not least, you know, I don't see that the neighborhood wants this at all. And to me, that's very important, as to what the folks that are adjacent to this property want. Folks that bought those properties probably had no idea that something like this could possibly go in there. While I appreciate everything the developers are trying to do, or their vision, I'm just going to say that I don't, along with the Planning Commission, I don't agree that this is the right location for this type of development.
Councilman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want to take some time to voice my position as well. Being from Ward B, I have a tendency of looking at all lake development as a good thing, because it's an opportunity for me and my family to go there and enjoy it. So I see this right away as, oh, this is exciting, this is, this is fun, this is, you know, lake development. And I heard it mentioned tonight that this is what the Lake Compeska Master Plan has asked for, and what the marketplace has asked for, and to that, I absolutely agree. But to Councilman Danforth's point, I don't know if this is the site for it. And I've done a great deal of consideration on it. I've called a lot of people that live on the lake, and live off the lake, and asked them their opinion. And the two, I wrote down the two comments I got the most, and it was not compatible to the area, and too condensed, and too high-dense. So, I don't know if I can get on board with supporting this, but what I will say to the neighbors is, this is already zoned, and it can be developed. So, you know, these folks are operating under the assumption that it could be developed. So I give them credit for stepping up and putting a plan together. It's absolutely not easy for developers to come in front of a council like this, and, you know, take the arrows, and I do feel, I do development for my full-time job, and this is one of the most detailed plans I've seen on a, on a PUD like this. So to that, I say thank you guys for being transparent with the council. And to the comment on, on the neighborhood, certainly at any point in time, we want to listen, this is what open government's for, we want to listen to your guys' concerns. But we also need to keep in mind that, in my backyard, I'll use it for an example, I hope nothing gets developed there. I like it the way it is. But we have to do ourselves a duty as landowners to assume what this land could be in the future. So, to the neighbors, I would just say that, and thank you guys for coming forward.
Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate everybody's input here tonight, and being the last one to share on this, I guess besides Mayor. I lived on South Lake Drive for about thirteen years, and so I kind of have a little bit of a pulse of what it's like to live out there, and from the prop to the country club, that stretch, been in three different properties there. Back in the day, can't believe I can say back in the day in my life now, but, but there was a time when, but there was a time when there wasn't much development across the road from South Lake Drive, living on the lake there. And it's changed, and now there's, now there's some houses that have gone up, and different properties are developed, and, but it's more, for the most part, it's housing, residential R1 that's gone up. And of course, living there, across from the country club, and, and nice to see the, you know, people teeing off hole number one, and where I was at before, and now if the houses start getting developed, you don't get to see much there, but it's just, part of that is the progress, to Councilman Peters' point, that as much as we like having open, open property maybe around us, development is a good thing, just wise development, as Councilman Danforth is talking about. So just me living out there and picturing this, I probably kind of alluded to this two weeks ago, just, again, the type of development with the, with the, what do you call them, sportsman condos, and, and as far as does that fit this, you know, what we're looking for as a city, I appreciate the developers and what they're doing, I mean, I really do. One thing I did, I did appreciate was Mr. Hanson's, when he mentioned cohesiveness for development, for the direction, we need to get together, and that's been brought up by some other, other councilmen, because I can only imagine as a developer, it'd be nice to know, I guess here you know, it's R1, and you're just asking to change it. So I guess technically, that's, you know, that's, that's okay, the direction we're going here, but as far as the process goes, but I can understand the difficulty as a developer, you know, to know kind of where are we sitting as a city around the lake, across the lake, across the road from the lake, lakeside versus across the street, you know, what do, what do we use, or what's our direction we want to go? And we've discussed here, as this council even, do we talk a little bit more further on that, so, so that developers can have a, you know, an idea on which direction to go? So there could be some wisdom in having a few more of those conversations. But I also, on the last point here, I do appreciate Mr. Scott's desire, he mentioned about desire to work with the neighborhood, work with, you know, to, you know, if this doesn't go through, we had, we had a development in the northeast part of town, where the same process happened, the developer, the neighborhood, as the city, our staff, as a council, we were kind of working through this for quite some time, and it came back as a PUD after the first time it got, you know, denied. And it seemed, is everyone always going to be happy, but you could tell the developer desiring to work with the neighborhood, working together, you could just see it almost, just as a community, you could see that process proved well. And so I'm hoping that through this process here even, that developers don't give up, they, you know, look at this, if it doesn't pass, I'm kind of, we can kind of read between the lines here where it's going to go, but hopefully as a developer, and as a neighborhood, that we realize we are in this together as a community. And so hopefully this isn't something to take the wind out of your sails, more just something to kind of help redirect the sails, and which way we should go as far as on property like this. Pardon the pun, I guess, for lake property, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Tepper, you had a question?
Just going to reiterate a couple of things here, and all due respect for everybody that's in this room, both sides. And I got a question I'm going to give back to Councilman Beeler, maybe not a question, but just a couple of comments, and I don't disagree with your, your thinking, Councilman, but kind of on the point where Councilman Shuddy just came from. Within the last year, we've just went through a very controversial PUD up in the northeast part of town, where there was twice as many people in the room as this. And if we want to grow as a community, we've got to look a little bit more open. We also had another one up on North eighty-one that, that was very controversial. It's not an easy job sitting here, put it that way. Something's going to get built there sooner or later. Somebody could, probably, and maybe I'm wrong, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if it goes back to R1, somebody could go out there and build a house on the island. You know, I don't think that's what anybody wants to see, but it is possible. Try to be open, I mean, I've said this many a times, and I know some people don't like me saying it, the only way you're guaranteed what's out your back door is buy it. You know, so keep that in mind when you guys are opposing it, because it's in your back door, this isn't what you want to see. It might be the best thing, what you can see. You may not like what comes forward, so, all due respect for all of you, all due respect for everybody sitting in this room, it's going to be a hard decision, but, but sometimes we've got to make hard decisions. That's what you voted this in for, so thank you.
Thank you. Al, Councilman Jerrance.
Thanks, Councilman Tepper, for, you know, sharing your views. It doesn't have to be developed someday. It can be bought, if there's a willing seller and a willing buyer, and it can be kept the way it is. It could be parceled off, the dwelling that's sitting there, it could be sold. I've had this discussion with quite a few that have reached out to me, and I actually, I'm not going to say who else I've had the conversation with, but that is, that is an option. And like I said at the first reading, maybe the notoriety, maybe the, maybe just the talk amongst the media, maybe that is a possibility also. But I have to just disagree a little bit, this does not have to be a developed area. This can be left the way it is. I'm done.
Councilman Tepper, you asked for a little rebuttal?
Just, just, yes, I agree with that, Lynn, that's it, or Councilman Jerrance. That's exactly what I just said. If you'd like what's out your back door, buy it. And, and any of you guys could go together and buy that piece of property, I'm sure these gentlemen probably sell it to you, because they've got a lot of money tied up into it, so that would be an option. I'm not saying that's never an option, so.
Councilman Jerrance? All right. I will speak just as a councilman, as a vote, so if anyone wants to ask me a question or counter me. This one's a tough one for me, this is one I'm sure that I'm not alone here, this is not a clear-cut issue for me, pro or con. On one hand, I definitely can see the concerns of the people who live right across the street and nearby, and not wishing it to affect their quality of life, how they see it. I can also see it from a developer standpoint, that you bought the land at a point when, in that, in that debate, it is true. If someone, if some generous soul wanted to come forward and purchase that, and protect it in perpetuity as a wildlife conservation district, or however, an easement for a hundred years, you certainly can. There's nothing stopping you. There's not a lot of people who have that kind of money, and who want to do that. People buy land to develop it. People make investments in land, in other things, in order to make money. That's just the way of the world. I mean, it's not perfect, it's not great, but that's capitalism, and it's the best system that anyone has come up with yet. It can get ugly. This is one of those times where it's not pretty. I'm not going to call it ugly, it's just maybe not pretty, because people are affected, and it's, it's real-life issues. On one hand, I want to be pro-development. You've got a potential twelve million dollar development, that's a lot of taxes that are immediately brought into this, into the city, and in perpetuity, as this continues to pay taxes coming forward. I hear it from people all the time who own stores, restaurants in town, that it is very difficult for a town the size of Watertown to make it just on the population that we have. We need to attract people who come into town to visit us. The biggest visiting attraction that we have is potentially Lake Compeska, but the access to Lake Compeska is extremely limited right now. I'm not saying this is the way to do it, because this is not access. I know that there has been rumors that it might propose access. That's problematic for me, I don't like that aspect of it, but this could at least bring in a little bit more value, a little bit more people who could at least store their toys close by, so that if they felt like they wanted to access the lake, it would be maybe a thirty-minute, go hitch up your boat and take it, take it into the lake, versus a two-hour production if you're bringing it in from town, or something like that. So I can understand that. So I hear the store owners, and I hear the restaurant owners who say that they want more people coming into this town, and we've got to do things to attract that. But at the same time, I also understand the concern with people who live there. The congestion issue is one, I look at it from a couple of different points of view. There was one, I will say, it's more the fill, the environmental aspect of it. There was a lot that impacted me at the last hearing, when according to the drainage ponds and the fill issue, compared to what this could be if it stayed R1 and was fully developed with however many houses that it could have, this actually brings in less fill than what an R1 development would bring in. That was made clear at the last meeting, and I have not had anyone who has contradicted that, that, but that's on Toby Slough. The congestion issue on the road is one that has been raised, and I am concerned about that as well, because it is a narrow road. Councilman Danforth had a good point, there was a person washing their truck, I think, that was sticking almost out into South Lake Drive. You could make the argument that we, that we allowed the lots to be too narrow, but we can't go back in time and change that, just like we can't go back in time and change that this was annexed into the city. I'm not sure if we would do that now. But once we annexed it in, we had to expect realistically that this is going to be developed at one time, because you're not going to annex something into the city for someone to buy it and make it a wildlife conservation reserve in perpetuity. That's just a matter of fact. So, we just have to move forward as best we can. I want to thank the developer for trying to work with the city, the concerns of the citizens, and your willingness to possibly bring this back, addressing more of the concerns. I want to thank you for that willingness. That speaks a lot to your interest in Watertown, just as it did in the northeast part of town with that very contentious PUD that we went through earlier this, or earlier last year. And that was a long process as well. I also want to say to all of the opposition, I hope that you can at least go back, however the vote goes, and say that there was a full and thorough hearing, and it was fair. And if anyone has a problem that this has not been fair or thorough, I would welcome your comments on that. But with that said, that's my view. Councilman Danforth?
I got one last comment, and really, it's based on the input that I've received. I haven't had any one person that's called me that has said, "I don't want any development over there." What they've suggested is, let it be developed R1. But I haven't had anybody say, "Don't build anything over there." And we have had that on occasion in certain locations, where we say, "We don't want something out there." Well, then, Mr. Tepper, then you're right, then you should have bought the land. But I haven't had anybody come to me, email-wise, telephone calls, message, whatever, and said, "I don't want anything out there." To me, that's, doesn't mean that that land can't be developed in a manner that is probably most acceptable in that area, all aspects considered. But fact of the matter, I said this last time, the developer, that the landowners have a developable right, no matter whether it's a PUD, or a R1, R2, whatever it is, they have a right to develop, as long as they're, they're within the confines of their, the ordinances and laws. And that's the case here. So, anyway, I just, to me, that's important. Not being told, "Don't develop there." Being told, "Go with what the plan was," because that's the best use of that land, all things considered.
Councilman Peters?
Yeah, last comment, I'm sure the applicants are just wanting us to vote and get this thing done with. You know, to Councilman Danforth's point of it staying R1, I don't disagree with that at all, but I would just keep in mind, as a reminder, we've heard traffic quite a bit, and right now, we have two approaches per the plans that I've seen, and if we do do R1, that would, that would result in significantly more approaches onto South Lake Drive. And I understand the population would be much less with single families versus sportsman's condos, but I would just keep in mind going forward that if this does get developed R1, that there will be approaches put in there, there will be driveways put in there, there will be more planned for ingress egress than what's currently planned right now.
Any further comments? To make it clear, there needs to be a supermajority to overturn the Plan Commission, that would require five affirmative votes. An affirmative vote is to approve the PUD. A nay vote is to not approve the PUD. There needs to be five votes in the affirmative. Just want to make that clear. Is everyone clear? With that, if you are in favor of this amending of the zoning map, you will vote aye. If you are opposed, you will vote nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tepper?
Aye.
Beeler?
No.
Danforth?
No.
Hollein?
Aye.
Jerrance?
No.
Peters?
Nay.
Shuddy?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Thank you very much. We are on to other business. Is there any other business from the council? Councilman Jerrance?
I believe this discussion really should alert us to start doing some work on commercial lake district, and the sooner the better, so developers know what they're getting into. We continue to hear more lake wanting to be developed, and we are sitting on our heels a little bit, not throwing a ball here in the court, I think we all know this, it's a hard issue, but it's one that we will need to cross soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilman Jerrance, and I don't want to open a debate with you on this, but I just want to make it clear, anyone can amend the CL zoning ordinance at any time, all you need is one other councilman. It doesn't always have to be done as a group. If you have an idea you believe passionately in, get one other councilman to put it on the agenda, and let's debate it. It doesn't always have to go through a committee. Councilman Peters?
That means Councilman Jerrance needs a friend.
And I'm, and I'm not saying that as a, as for or against, but I'm just saying, as a council, I welcome anyone, if you feel passionately about something, drive it, take ownership of it. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Lynn, I will be your friend on this. We could, we could resolve this tonight, and I know-
We could, we could resolve this tonight, and I know there's others. I know Mike probably would like to jump in there too, if it takes three people to make this happen. I know we've had endless discussions on this. I think, personally, I think it's real simple to fix. Real simple, real quick, without a lot of analyzation. So yeah, I'm all for moving forward with, uh, us getting this done. Revised that CL.
Councilman Peters?
I don't have a smart aleck comment this time. Uh, I would agree. I think we need to take a look at it. I think tonight's a good reminder. It seems as though it's unfortunate that every time we get an application in, we say, "Oh, we gotta take a look at it." "No, we gotta look into it a little bit harder." Well, we do, before another application comes in. It's our responsibility to, to tighten the screws on it, make sure that we can put in some parameters that everybody can follow and that we're confident in. So I'll be your friend, Councilman Jurens.
Well, and if you're calling him friend, as Councilman Bueller did, I will allow you to call him Lynn. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to provide a little clarity, um, if two of you are wishing to put something on the agenda, you would need to just submit your language proposal to me, and then we would put it on an upcoming agenda. But to just say we want to talk about CL, um, probably isn't going to be terribly productive for anyone because to your point, we've done that a lot of times. So I think it would be helpful to have some specific language to actually discuss.
Any other business? Any city council, or, well, we'll count that as announcements or introduction of future topics of discussion. Um, City Manager, you have something to say?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year. Welcome to 2024. It will be a great year, um, but we wanted to share something with you all that has been, um, a labor of love for staff over the last several months, but particularly for the IT staff. And, um, IT Director Boyle, if you'd like to come up and show the new website that is going to launch tomorrow. Um, it's very pretty and we're very grateful to not only Pete and his team, but there was an internal, every department that has, uh, painstakingly gone over content. And, uh, yeah, so we're excited, excited for this. Uh, we really looked at it from the user experience. How do we make the website, uh, more user-friendly, um, to, to those that are, are coming here for information and how to, um, access all of us. So, take it away, Pete.
Thank you, Manager Mac. So yeah, uh, for the past, uh, I think it's probably been about two and a half, three months that we've been, uh, working with Civic Plus, our, uh, website provider on a new design for our website. Um, we wanted to reflect our new city branding as well as, um, kind of take a deep look at, you know, why would someone come to the city website? What are they looking for? Generally, they're looking for services, so we decided to put a focus on city services. What are the top services that are, um, that our citizens are coming for? Um, we use some of our site analytics, uh, data that shows us, you know, why people are coming into the site, what they're clicking on, and this is, uh, we wanted to put it right in people's face. What are you looking for? Do you want to talk to the council? Here you go. Takes you right to the council's page. We've got our vision, missions, and vision, mission, and values, um, as well as all of your pretty faces on there. And an easy way to contact you, so. I know. Um, so yeah, um, we wanted to make it, uh, we're always striving for excellence in everything we do and including the city website. Um, we know that, uh, we just want to make it easy for people to find what they're looking for and, uh, do business with the city, so. Um, that's, that's about all I have to say in a nutshell. But it, it looks nice. It's, uh, displaying our, our new city colors, our new city logo. Um, just making it a, yeah, I think we have a good product.
Uh, Director Boyle, is it Director?
Sure is.
I, I'd actually like to give you some more chance to answer some questions because I'd like this to be a news story tomorrow because this is something that directly impacts the public, hopefully on a daily basis going forward. And we can't say that about a lot of the business that we do. So I, I guess I'd start by asking, what are the areas? Have you been tracking what are the areas that the outside public most goes to?
So with our website, we have site, website analytics. Basically, it's data showing, telling us what people are clicking on, how long they're staying on the site, you know, what they're searching for, what they're after. Um, generally, I mean, uh, our, our biggest, uh, the most clicked on thing is actually the library, just because people are going to the library's site and they're looking for their programs. But we also know that, um, people want to contact the council. They're also looking for, uh, agendas and they want to contact city staff. Um, one of the, the, the big focuses for the site is making sure that we have an easy way for, uh, the citizens to be able to find staff and how to contact them. So put a lot of effort into that. Um, another thing is careers. Uh, on the old site, you have to kind of go your way through the menu to find even where our city jobs are, but, uh, we wanted to focus on, on that, um, as well as we put a nice big button there that takes you right to, uh, where our city job postings are. Um, the other big thing, licenses and permits. People are coming here for building permits, zoning permit, you know, all the other permits that the city has to offer. I'm, I can't begin to rattle them all off, so, uh, but we wanted to, again, make it easy for people to find those. Um, again, people are wanting to report street concerns. We have a button that takes you right to the form that, um, you can, uh, even fill this form out, and if you have a pothole that needs to be filled, this gets sent straight to the street department.
And I actually want to say that that is the fastest way to get a pothole fixed. My wife actually brought forward a pothole concern to me and I said, "Go to the website."
Sure.
And it actually was faster.
Yeah. Well, it gets on there right.
It goes directly to our street department and they act upon it. Yeah. And they, they put it on their workflow, whereas, and not to say that it can't get done if you go through a, one of us, but it's just, you're just adding one more step.
Right, yeah, it just goes right to the source, right?
Yeah.
So, um, another thing, we just also wanted to highlight some of our services that, you know, a lot of people are coming to the library, like I mentioned. Uh, parking rack, signing up for classes there, um, things of that nature. Notifications, if you want to be informed on when holiday garbage is being picked up, you can go to the notify me section and sign up for holiday garbage notifications.
And I, I do want to make one thing clear because I know I asked you this before, is if you are already signed up for city notifications, you will continue to be signed up and receive?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Jurens?
You touched on this a couple of times, uh, manager Pete, director Pete?
You can just call me Pete.
All right. Mr. Boyle?
Sure, that works too.
Contacting not only city employees, but contacting us, especially after, uh, an issue like we dealt with tonight. There was multiple people that wanted to connect with multiple councilmen. Did the, did this, did this change? Did, did things change on how they're connecting with us and contacting us? Is it easier? Is it the same? Before, they had to like fill out a contact box.
Now it is more straightforward. Um, when you go to the city council page, um, you can, you can do it a number of different ways. So, so I, okay, I won't click on Mike, but, but it'll, uh, take you right to the, the staff directory page for the council. Um, it has their email and as well as the city hall phone number. Um, and if you click that, it'll open up whatever you're using for email to, uh, it'll just start the message. There's no form or anything like that you have to go through.
Councilman, Councilman Jurens, anything else? Councilman, uh, as long as this is right on that, otherwise I've got to go to Councilman Bueller. Councilman Tupper, you had something right on this?
Can they send that, let's say they want to send an email to more than one. Can they do the same email to more than one?
Not necessarily through this. Um, it's just, you click on, if I want to email Mayor Hollein, I click on his name. It opens up, it sends a message to Hollein. But their email addresses are right here. So if you know that you want to email Reed and, uh, Councilman Danforth, um, highlight, copy, that it's readily available.
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Pete?
Yes, sir.
Um, in our previous website, we did have up, an area that said maps. So if I want to look at maps, pull up that homepage. And, and, but do you have a tab for that under there or how do I get to that, I guess is my question?
So, on the old site, we had, it broken out into a number of different tabs up here on the top. And it was kind of confusing. Um, they were all broken out in such a way, and I was like, I could probably condense these down to a more digestible way to navigate the website. Um, I call it a communications. If that doesn't stick, we can always change that.
I, you know, I, yeah, I think if there's any way to put a tab, like you got with the other ones?
These ones here for the maps?
If possible. If you could, I know it's kind of screws up your even 12 you got there, but, um, I think that's important. I really do. I, with all the different types of maps that we have available that people want to look at.
Yeah.
Um, I think that would be beneficial if we could do that. And then I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bueller, City Manager Mac would like to say something about the map thing before you leave.
I know. She's going to disagree with me for, for some reason.
I'm not going to disagree. I'm just going to comment that a lot of thought went into what those buttons are. And we'll continue to monitor the traffic, and if things change, we can switch the buttons out. But yeah, I'm not going to add a 13th one because it will just mess everybody up.
Well, and that, that's a good point, uh, Manager Mac.
See, I told you.
So, uh, the website, it's a, it's not just a static thing. You do it once and you forget about it. It's a living and breathing thing. It will evolve as we evolve. Um, it'll change as, you know, as we find that, you know, people are looking for certain services or want certain things from the website, we will tailor it to their experience.
Okay. I just, I, I would struggle if I'm, me even, which, not just the general public, somebody who works with all, with all these crazies around here all the time. Um, I don't know where I, if I would look at communication for maps. I just struggle with that. But, um, the other thing is, so at the, can I see the top of the homepage? Again, can you scroll to what we're going to see when you, when you jump on, when you log in?
This is when you get to the front of the site, yep.
Okay, so that's going to change? Is that going to change all the time, the graphic?
Oh, you're talking about this background photo?
Yes.
Yeah, it actually, it should, if I refresh.
Instead of like a fence with some trees like that?
Yeah. This is at the zoo, sir.
Well, I don't know that. I'm looking, I want to see some cool Watertown stuff.
Well, okay. So I, I do have, uh, I, I, sorry, I didn't mean to be so. Um, so.
Oh, it's the zoo. Well, that, there we go.
Well, so I wanted to change, the photos will change as the seasons change. There is actually, I have them automatically set so that on spring, uh, March 21st, we will get springtime photos. When I get to summer, we'll get nice pictures of the lake, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, and I do, I do want to say I appreciate, and I know because I've done this. I've done web development, and I, I do appreciate the work that you've put in. I'm sure that you've.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you. Pete, just one suggestion. Go to the, where you got the council contact thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a thought.
Uh huh.
Um, not giving you direction or anything, but when they click on that, the very first thing that, there should be like a little decision bar, "Are you upset?" And it's yes or no. And if it's, if it's no, put them right through. If it's yes, put like some kind of disconnect.
Need a flow chart.
Their computer.
That's going to make the news.
So, just my thought. I think that's a good idea.
That's a great feature request. City manager back.
Oh, it's gone completely off the rails. Um, Director Boyle, could you verify the website address is staying the same?
Yes, so, uh, up until around sometime tomorrow afternoon, um, we're making the, the final switch over tomorrow. They say at noon, but it usually takes a, a couple of hours before, um, it'll actually register. Uh, but yeah, it will still be WatertownSD.us. Um, this is just the, the development link, if you will. Um, but yeah, it will still be WatertownSD.us. None of that is changing. Thank you, sir.
Now I want to say Director Boyle has put in a lot of work over a lot of, long time for this, as his staff has as well. And I want to thank you because this is just another example of how customer service is our business here at City Hall.
Absolutely.
And we're trying to make that, we're trying to reflect that in our priorities and what we're doing. And hopefully the public sees that, uh, the effort being put in. So thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't do, I couldn't have not done this alone. Um, I got help from multiple departments. I had a, a liaison, I'll say, from every department that, um, helped kind of, uh, make this into what it is. Uh, we wanted to make the best thing we have, so I appreciate everyone's help that helped me with this.
All right. Thank you very much. Is anything else, City Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. We do have a reason to go into executive session tonight for a contractual and a personnel issue. We will not be taking any action when we come out. Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Councilman Peters, second by Councilman Tupper, any discussion on that? All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night. God bless you and happy new year, Watertown.